Monday, January twenty six.
Twenty six.
Twenty six. Please rise with flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a short-term agenda here, so we are going to skip over a lot of the presentations and get down to some of the meat of the meeting, starting with, is there any nominations for vice chairperson?
Nomination to nominate Mrs. Craigin.
Second.
Nomination in second, except Sally Craigin as vice chairperson for twenty two.
The closed nomination? Do we need to do that?
Yes. For second, closed. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed. I just say opposed. Any, all in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Alright. We have one person for nomination, so please state who you are going to nominate for vice chairperson. I'm going to do a roll call vote. So, who are you, sir?
Sally Craigin.
Matt?
Sally Craigin.
Pete?
Sally Craigin.
Sally Craigin.
Sally Craigin. Alright, Sally Craigin. This is what happens when you're not here. You get voted vice chairperson.
That'll teach 'em.
Teach her. Any other subcommittees we can name Sally, too?
Yeah, we'll create five more. Okay, we're going to move on with the approval of the minutes from December fifteenth.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Could I ask a question? Just on page four, where it says, we're talking about the academic support center in the year, but where it says the total number of students using, should that be student visits or is it appropriate to say students using? Because it's fourteen, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety.
Student visits.
Student visits.
Okay. That's sort of a minor change, I don't think we necessarily need a vote for that. Okay, so there's been a motion to approve the meeting minutes, there hasn't been a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Meeting minutes were passed. Moving on to the school community member and student reports, starting with the chair report. Not much to report, we have snow, and we also have swearing in of a new police chief on Thursday. At seven thirty, there'll be a special meeting of the city council, and following that will be the swearing-in ceremony for Detective Sergeant Ernie Martino, who has been selected to be the next police chief, so congratulations to him. We've also set the state of the city for 2015 to February eleventh. I believe that's seven, though I'd have to double-check that, cannot stop the next meeting. So, and you are all invited to that event. Resource committee, we have an innovation school audit discussion, don't know if we want to move that to right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
The chair, do you want to have the chair of the resource committee bring it forward, or?
Should, maybe I should read what you all have from Mr. Jokla, the minutes of our meeting that, that we held on one five fifteen. We did talk about strategic planning at that meeting, but we also talked about the innovation school audit discussion. Mr. Jokla distributed the attached memo dated January fifth, two thousand and fifteen to the resource committee members and verbally summarized said memo. Mrs. Moisen, the board chair, informed this committee that the Mums caught the entire board off-guard and do not speak on the board's behalf. Mrs. Moisen stated there is no formal request from the board for a financial review, review. Mrs. Moisen agreed that a group should sit down and review the perspective and really is not aligned with the current prospective language. Mrs. Moisen stated the school is performing well and is fortunate to have thirteen active board members. Superintendent Ravenell informed the school committee that Marion Guerrero is working with Principal Ramirez regarding the innovation school structure, as Marion is a retired principal of an innovation school in Worcester who collaborated with the Worcester central office on not being funded on a per pupil basis. Mr. Stevens recognized Mayor Wong to speak. Mayor Wong summarized her impression of the Mums' communication and stated that a full-hearted should not be considered. Instead, the mayor will personally contact the city auditing firm regarding other options. Mr. Stevens made a recommendation to send the memo from Superintendent Jokla to the mayor. Mr. Carboney seconded the motion. A general discussion of McKay board membership ensued, with Miss Moisen informing all that Salama, President Micron Products, has agreed to join the board. Well, that's kind of where we left with our resource committee.
If I may, Mayor, so, just to bring everybody up to date on what has taken place or what's been done so far, as you know, there were concerns that were raised by the Mums' group regarding budget practices and budget issues. Originally, they contacted the state auditor's office, the state auditor then contacted yourself and the city council and basically said this is not an area that they would be working in, but if the city council or the mayor would request it, you know, they would pursue an audit and/or give advice for an audit. I chose to write a letter to the state auditor myself, which you all have copies of and the city council has copies of, asking them for direction. You know, I hold firm that there is nothing that, that the Pittsburgh Public Schools' finance office or anyone else has done that, that it would be inappropriate in any way, and that I welcome anyone to, who has experience in that area, to come and look at that and, if there is anything at all, to give us advice on what could be changed or what could be done differently. I received a letter back from the state auditor that said that they, again, would not be the best people to do that, but they made recommendations. And based on those recommendations, I asked Bob to contact possible auditors to find out who's out there and what they would do. And he came back to the resource meeting to you with a couple of options in terms of what we could do. My goal is to make this as transparent as possible, to make it very clear to the community that we take these issues seriously, and it, my goal, and I know the goal of the school committee, would be to bring some closure to it with whatever light we can shine on it that would clarify the issues and everything else for all those involved, which is why we brought this to the resource subcommittee. There was clearly some discussion at the subcommittee meeting, and it seems the appropriate thing would be now to bring this to a full committee in an open session and discuss this issue so that we can, so that I, because I work for you. You direct me what to do and which direction to go in, and since it requires action and also funding, we would have, we would also have to look at, you know, what are the costs and what's the funding and where would we go? So, that's the goal of this meeting, is to have now a discussion with the full committee in terms of how you would like to proceed.
So maybe to clarify my position, if I may. There are really a number of, of things that we look at every year through our normal audit process, and during that audit process, they often ask us if there's, they'll interview individual staff, they'll interview myself, and ask if there's specific areas, departments, concerns that we have that would require further audit. And oftentimes, we have looked into certain areas, you know, in the effort to make the city government more transparent and effective. In this particular case, though, this is not an issue in which I, as a mayor, or any of the department heads who have looked at this, have any particular concerns. And in fact, the governing board does not have concerns about this, and they've already looked at it. So it's not like they said, "We just don't have concerns and we don't want to look into it." We've all looked into it and don't have any concerns. So to then bring it to the level of our auditors taking a look at it and then being able to basically say, "We now need to maybe pay a few thousand dollars additional in funding to look at this particular question," that the mayor, you know, perhaps the school committee as a whole, which is what we're looking at now, certainly the resource subcommittee, department heads, and the governing board of McKay don't have an issue with, doesn't seem like a good precedent. Certainly, there's, I would say, better use of our resources and our time, and I believe that we all understand the information that's been forwarded to us, and we do believe that it's maybe a misunderstanding, misinterpretation of that information that is the primary issue. And in that case, I'm not sure if, you know, spending thousands of dollars on somebody else saying the same thing is necessarily going to produce any results that are different than that.
I think, you know, charges that they make, that we have all the success money that's used, to understand what, what takes place, bills are generated at the school department, we have a committee of, of school committee members that review bills every two weeks, we sign off, we have an outstanding city auditor in the city of Pittsburgh, the bills go to City Hall, all the checks are cut for the city treasurer's office. We do not have money left over at the end of the year. We're talking about it constantly, looking at funds. We do not have to spend money that should be going to the education of the schoolchildren to satisfy a group of people who, I don't know where they're coming from, I don't know what they're looking for, they're just throwing mud and seeing what sticks is the way I look at it. Let them pay for an audit if they want an audit, not, not the school department, not the city. That's my feeling.
I would agree with that. I mean, I think, we've been sitting here and we've seen many things that we would like to spend six, seven thousand dollars on, you know, whether that's trips that kids are going on, or tables for science classes, or academic success center. I mean, the last thing that we would need is to spend school budget money on, and I so, and I totally understand the desire to, to deal with this as soon as possible, and I think if this is a way to do that where we don't actually have to spend that, those thousands of dollars, I would welcome that. We get the resolution, but, and we follow up and we're paying attention to this, obviously, but we're not taking resources away from kids.
Well, I'm conflicted only in that I don't see how that puts this to rest. I, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I'm not a fan of the approach or the, some of the content of the communications that have led to this discussion from this group, meaning the folks who are making these allegations, but there's a part of me that feels like, you know, spending a few thousand bucks to put it to bed because nothing we say will satisfy them. And I don't see them going away, they keep, I got more emails this weekend about this, and they're, it's, I don't know, if they're asking us to look into something and we don't, that doesn't, that's not going to be a satisfactory resolution to them. So that's what I wrestle with. I agree that we have plenty of needy line items, but this could be a way of, it would, and I have every belief, I should make this clear to the folks paying attention to this, that I don't think anything is a mess. Whenever I have questions about finances, I always get answers that make sense to me. But the scope and specificity of these things is beyond what I can explain away easily. But I also have faith in our professional administrators. So, I think this doesn't get resolved without somebody outside coming in. I was disappointed that the auditors wouldn't do that, because the fact that you gentlemen asked them, I thought was a show of good faith, that, "Look, we're not afraid to have someone come in," but, so, I don't know if there's another mechanism that these folks could get an auditor to look at the books, I mean, I'm assuming all these documents are public records in some way or another, but, anyways, that's what I'm wrestling with, is, I think the only way to put this to bed is to have someone from outside look at it, so.
I think Mr. Jokla and Superintendent Ravenell have, under freedom of information, have provided all the information that they have requested. I don't think anything that we provide to them is going to make any difference, they will ask for something else. And I don't want to open the gates to start this on, anybody who wants to ask the city, the school department, "Let's have an audit, we don't like what you show."
And I would also say, Matt, you know, you sort of mentioned that, or it seemed to imply that we haven't looked into it, so saying that by not doing a third-party audit that costs thousands of dollars, that we haven't looked into it, I think we've looked into this issue tremendously more than we've looked into.
I know, I'm in, I'm in, again, the tough spot, because I do believe that we've looked into it, and I do trust our administrators, and I trust Mr. Sarazin, and I trust the controls we have in place, but if, if someone says, you know, "You took something from me," and you say, "No, I checked, I didn't," that doesn't say, "Oh, you didn't." Someone else has to say, "Look, you didn't take it." So, it's just a, I'm, I'm torn only because I just don't know how we resolve this, because I am not looking to indulge fanciful and spurious accusations, but if this would be a way to say, "Look, you're barking up the wrong tree." So that's what I'm wrestling with, because I'm not trying to cast dispersions on anybody here, but I don't know if us saying that you think, if these folks think that we're doing something wrong and then we say, "No, we're not," that doesn't settle the issue. I guess, I'm torn, I just had to voice that.
I just think this group, if this gets settled, they're going to find something else to, to bring up and send out to a million people and keep increasing the email list just, for what reason, I don't know, but the fact that they don't even identify themselves other than.
Well, they did on the first couple, but, yeah, I know what you mean, I get, I don't, I don't, I don't like their tactics, and I don't like the accusatory tone, I find, off-putting, but, again, it's, it's, the, the scope is just beyond what I can explain away, so.
So, this is a typical item that is referred to the mayor's office, because I'm the chief executive officer, and I would look into things like this, whether it's here or something else, and it really is on my shoulders to, to look into it, and I have, and work with the staff, and even choose to audit the staff or look at different ways to ensure that we have these safeguards in place. So this particular issue is really not just, does someone agree with the information we provide, but I also look at the processes in which we come up with this information, the processes in which we, actually, you started to outline, Mr. Stevens, about the way that we have checks and balances, about our budgeting process on our bill payments. And I have a lot of faith in that, we've done a lot of work, we always know that there's, there's room for improvement, and we continue to do that. But I do believe that, in looking at this issue, I look into issues every day, and when people don't disagree, whether it's turning on a streetlight or fixing the road first, these are the, these are the same tactics that are used for just about everything I deal with. You know, I get calls every day from Fox News, or Channel Seven, or the radio, or the Boston Globe, or somebody about some issue every single day. Very rarely does anything ever come alight, including this particular issue. News stations have contacted me, I always hear, "If you don't do what I say, then we're going to contact everybody," and I welcome that. So this has gone through a tremendous amount of transparency, but now we're at the point where this is above and beyond, because we're basically asking for even further redundancy that's going to be a true cost of the city, for something that we have looked into already, and that has taken up a lot of time already from our paid staff. So, we have a lot of other things that we need to do, and I think there's always folks every day who would like to upset the apple cart, and they would like to drive their particular agenda home, and I think that's where, as elected officials, in conjunction oftentimes with oversight of our administration and staff, that we have to set the tone, that we have to set the priority, and bring the discussion back to, have we put in good systems? Do we have good staff in place? Do we have our own audits and checks and balances in place that we have faith that we are doing the best we can to strategically fund and oversee taxpayer, public dollars, and to do the best for our kids? Or whatever the department is, you know, public safety, public works, and so on. And I believe in this case, we have. We've made tremendous changes. And the innovation school, I have to say, is doing incredibly well, has great leadership. We are not hearing complaints from the board at large, we are not hearing complaints from the community at large about this school, we're only hearing great things. So, this is put in that context, it has to be put in that context, otherwise, there just isn't enough time in the day to run everybody's agenda and use taxpayer dollars for their particular agendas, especially when it's unclear and it's anonymous, and it's really based in a lack of understanding about the material we provided.
I would suggest, then, that we just continue to let the mayor's office handle it.
Well, I think a formal recommendation was made and voted on in the resource committee to send it to me to look at, just as I would look at any, any issue similar to this.
Could I ask, is there communication with this group through your office about your findings and the process that you've just kind of outlined?
So what is hard to figure out is that I will get an email, the councils will get an email, our auditor will get an email, our city's listener will get an email, and we'll provide some information, and then we'll get this, "Never mind, we got it from this." So, it's, it's kind of hard to say that when you're talking about sort of anonymous, anonymous people and emails going here and there. I think that everyone is doing the best they can to accommodate the response. I think there has been a lot of response. So, because of that lack of clarity, really on, on the part of the people sending stuff to us, and the lack of understanding of the materials that we provide, I think our, our responsibility is to make sure that if there are any concerns that are raised, like, is there any impropriety, are there any processes that we need to look at, is there any staffing issues to make sure that these, you know, that the dollars are being spent wisely, are we achieving our goals? You know, that's sort of the broader picture that we're looking at and that we are still responsible for. So when this is sent back to me, I will look at that in that construct, not, you know, is this person, or these individuals, or whoever it is satisfied with whatever the answer is? Because, again, oftentimes, there's an agenda, and that agenda is not the agenda of the elected officials as a whole.
This is being sent out to literally hundreds of people, for what reason? Sending, sending this out to teachers who really don't have an understanding of what's taking place, it's just muddying the water. A number of teachers and administrators have told these people, "Take me off your email, I don't want to receive this." So it's, it's something we need to, you know, to put to bed, to rest, so, is, as we talked about in the resource committee meeting, that we were going to send it to the mayor, and the mayor, that would be my rec, motion is to send it to the mayor and let the mayor handle it.
Are we taking a motion at this point?
Was that a motion?
That was a motion, yep.
Well, I would second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion?
Well, what's the, this just puts it in your hands to deal with, as, ongoing, Adam?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't remove people's rights to call us or email us or ask us things.
Oh, I'm sure we'll, 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 yeah.
I get asked my prediction about the Patriots games all the time, and I have yet to be right, so, people still ask, but that's, you know, that's their right and it's our right to answer. But in terms of this particular issue, I will assure you that, that, you know, we are doing the best that we can without compromising our agenda, which is to provide quality education and make sure that there's good staff and good systems in place, and we'll continue to, you know, sort of make a note of this and try to accommodate what we consider would be new requests of information, as we would do with anybody else. So, a motion was made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The motion passes. Anything further from the resource committee?
Nope.
Anything from the policy committee?
We don't have a date yet, but Gina and I were just discussing getting together to go over the homework policy. So, once we have a date, we'll let everybody know.
Okay. Student support?
We're going to meet before our next meeting, which, I guess is next week, yeah, so, I think five thirty PM, right in here, in the Memorial Library.
Okay, nothing to report for school personnel, but I know.
New business?
New business?
Something in the Sentinel the other day really, really got to me and bothered me. It had to do with the Pittsburgh Lemister and Thanksgiving game, that somebody in the state wanted to do away, wanted the MIAA to do away with the Thanksgiving games. I would like us to go on record to opposing, that would be my vote, opposing canceling the Thanksgiving game in Pittsburgh Lemister and throughout the state, so they could have a champion and not have it interfere with the Thanksgiving game. Well, I don't think high school athletics are, should be about championships, I should think, I think football should be about just character building and participation, good citizenship, and just being a good citizen, and I, I can't, you know, so I, I'm, I would like Mr. Cuzenza to come in, and if, if the committee so wishes, I would like us to take a vote opposing doing away with the Thanksgiving game.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is this, I didn't catch that, is this something that is one person's opinion in the letter to the editor, or is this an actual?
This was a headline story in the Sentinel, somebody proposing the MIAA, so I'd just like us to go on record opposing it. Thanksgiving game, many people come home from Thanksgiving all over the state to go to their local Thanksgiving game and make it a long weekend. This person wants to do away with that, wants another Saturday game, and I'm opposed to it, so.
I'm just trying to think of what committee to, to send that to.
Student support. Have a mom and apple pie committee to send it to, so I guess maybe student support would be, sure.
And then perhaps make a recommendation?
Sure, we can do that, look at that. Sure. We can do that. Look at that.
Any other new or unfinished business communications?
Do we wanna mention the date of the, I don't have it in front of me, the joint convention and, uh, for, or replacement for Mr. Carbone? We should let folks know that they can, uh, just put their names into the city clerk's office for consideration. We got the date. I think it's March. Wanna say March 2nd?
No, it's next month, I think. Thanks.
Yeah. I remember being asked a whole bunch of dates.
Yeah.
And settling on one and I just can't remember which date it was. So.
Um, well, we can, we can bring it up, uh, next week at the.
Yeah, we're back next week.
We're back next week. So.
All right. Let's do that then. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report then.
Um, before I, I'm just gonna go to, um, a couple of the items, but before I do, I just, now that you've made a decision in terms of which direction you wanna go in, I wanna go on record to say that however you proceed, whatever you need to do, the, my office, the finance office will cooperate 100%. Uh, I want this to be as transparent as can be, um, and, and whoever needs to get involved or whatever, if you need anything, contact us and we will, um, we will participate fully.
Great. Thank you.
Um, so we took some of the items because of tonight's storm off of the agenda, but I, but would like to finalize the budget items in terms of the donations and the grants. So if we could go right directly to that, um, we've got some donations to respond to. Uh, one is a $50 donation from, uh, Dr. David Giannino Dentist's Office for, um, $50 for student supplies. Uh, $2,500 from the district attorney. As you know, he had already made a $2,500 donation, his fund to, uh, boys' sports, and now he has balanced that with the $2,500 donation for women's sports. There's a $200,000, $200, wish, I wish, $200 donation. Oh, Pete and Claudia, $200,000.
Yeah.
So a $200 donation from Pete and Claudia Stevens, and that's for, um, supplies for the Red Raider, um, marketplace and especially supplies in toiletries. One of the things that people forget when they're going to, for a lot of our kids who are, the toiletries are a big cost and sometimes they'd have to choose between food and, and that. Um, from Ms. Carol Selenga, market basket gift cards for $30, again, to go to the Red Raider marketplace. Um, and this is, I think, year number six or seven, and that's a donation from Mr. and Mrs. Kurt Breikman for $3,000 to Goodrich Academy. And this is a yearly donation that they make. And I think, um, Mike was talking about it going to their, um, their center, their student success center, uh, for technology. And then, um, donors choose a $350 donation in classroom organization materials and a $500 check from, uh, Verk Enterprise Alliance Energy, uh, to go to the principal's account for student activities. Um, and that's the final donation. In terms of grants, oh, some line item transfers. So there's a line item transfer at, uh, McKay Arts Academy submitted by, uh, Lourdes Ramirez, uh, and it is to transfer from the teacher conference account to the office supply account. And that's for, um, an amount of $1,500. And for those of you who may not have been here when we instituted it, um, principals are allowed to move funds horizontally within the same category. But if they wanna take funds from one category and move them to another category, so if you're taking funds from supplies and you wanna put it towards staffing or vice versa, it needs to get on this forum and it needs to come to school committee. And we implemented that about six or seven years ago. She's also asking to move $1,500 from the, um, McKay Arts, from the FAA professional development account to the office supply account. And then Jeremy Roach is asking to move $2,549.21 from the maintenance of equipment account to the new equipment account at Fitchburg High School. And then finally, we have some, uh, grants that have been submitted and some to be accepted. The one being submitted is a 21st Century Enhanced Program Grant, uh, for students with disabilities for $10,000. And the ones to accept is a grant from Office Depot for $1,500, box grant funded by Reebok for $1,000 to go to Crocker Elementary School, an owner's agent's technical assistance grant for $12,500 from the Department of Education, which will go to Memorial Middle School's roof, um, as for, to investigate potential solar panel installations, and a school nutrition equipment grant for $18,870, um, to purchase and install three-door refrigerator at Rheingold and purchase and install a refrigerated vertical open display case for sandwiches and salads at Fitchburg High School.
Questions or comments, any of you guys?
I, I think one comment. It, it showed on the line item transfers, uh, the transparency of those going to the resource committee and being explained and then coming to, uh, the full committee to be voted on. So, uh, there is transparency in the budget and when money is moved. Thank you.
Public testimony at this time. Dick Lourdes, do you have anything to add? Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Did you, and I might have just phased out, but did you mention the school choice funds?
No.
Was that in that same line?
Yeah, we have two. Yeah, they're different. Sorry. It's okay.
Why don't you do that?
I guess maybe I'll just, the three things. One was just, uh, in continuation of the, or getting back to resource subcommittee, um, we talked about the, uh, next steps in our strategic facilities planning process and, um, to have city purchasing solicit proposals from firms to assist the school committee assess current and future feasibility, along with current and future changes in student needs and Fitchburg's demographics. Then on the two school choice requests, um, the first one is, uh, recommendation to invest up to $3,000 in school choice funds for seven tables and 28 chairs at Memorial. And the second is a request from, uh, Donna Cirilla, the, uh, math director, to invest, uh, $6,578 in school choice funds for a half year of the math club league at the elementary, middle and high schools. And that would start, obviously, very soon after approval by the school.
And that was, that would be new. Uh, Donna is the curriculum director for math and she came to us and said, you know, we've not, we haven't done this. If we have, we haven't done it in a long time. And this would really be something good in order to begin these, preparing kids for math competitions and things like that. So that's where those.
Are those after-school clubs or are they?
Yes.
And those are stipends, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Those are the tables and chairs we talked about to assist that.
Yes.
Outstanding teacher that we have here at Memorial.
Yes, Carrie Boyd.
Action items. We have, um, 468 to 474 are all donations.
Make a motion if we take those as one.
Second.
All in favor of accepting, um, various donations from 468 to 474?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and the other folks have donated. Uh, 475, this is the, um, do we wanna vote on this? Do we, anybody have any questions on this one tonight? This is the, um, recommendation to have city purchasing solicit proposals from firms to assist the school committee to assess current and future facility feasibility, along with current and future changes in student needs and Fitchburg demographics. I know this was discussed in one of the subcommittees.
Would the proposals come back to us or would they just be selected from the business office or?
Generally, we'd, uh, look at who the lowest bid is and we'd still have some selection criteria. We could bring that to the resource committee members for review and final.
I wasn't sure how it usually works.
And this is in line with our long-term planning and ideas about here.
Yeah. Actually, this was in our strategic plan for us. So.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I'm in favor of it. I just wasn't sure with the next, if this, what the next step was.
Will there be a motion?
Uh, motion.
Second.
Second. All right. All, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 476, this is the line item transfer, MIA to FAA.
Make motion to accept.
Second.
Uh, teacher conference. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, 477, another line item transfer for professional development.
Motion to accept transfer.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 478, this is also a line item transfer, Fitchburg High School.
Make motion.
To new equipment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
What, Jeanne?
479, school choice funds.
Oh, make a motion.
I'll second that.
That's what you were telling me.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 480, this is the math club.
Make a motion to invest in this math club.
Second.
I just love this, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 481, this is submission of the 21st Century Grants.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 482, this is to accept a lot of grants.
Yeah.
Great.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, 483, uh, dead warrant, 1.1 million.
Motion pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And last one, 44, another dead warrant, 1.6 million.
Motion pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There is no executive session. So.
Motion for adjournment.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
What do you think?
Good job, Mayor. Good job.